June 5th, Rockville Center's Board of Education. The regular meeting of the Rockville Center Board of Education. I'd like everybody to rise and join us with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and endless. Welcome, everybody. Any and all correspondence that can be posted are posted on the table outside in the hall. We are moving Dr. Johnson, acceptance of gifts.
I'm going to turn this right over to Mr. -- Dr. Pelletieri. We do have some checks tonight that are very impressive. Mr. Pelletieri, would you like to go?
Yes, very much so. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Very excited. This time each year, we partner throughout the year with the Rockville Center Education Foundation. It is a not-for-profit here in the district, works very closely with our schools, and grants a great deal of money to our schools and our teachers, and apply for grants each and every year. We had over 27 grants applied for this year, requesting almost $90,000, maybe a little over $90,000 this year. And so I want to bring up Dr. Audra Ceruto, who is the president of the Education Foundation. You want to come up, Audra? This year, the Education Foundation is donating over $70,000, $70,300 -- oh, don't turn. $70,326.21 from the Education Foundation, through Rockville Center Schools.
Want to thank the community for coming out and supporting the Ed Foundation this year. The foundation provides funding for grants that the teachers and the staff request to enhance the curriculum of the schools. And this year, there was a different kind of call to action by the teachers and the staff. They were requesting innovative ways to address the mental health and the well-being of our students. And we were -- it resonated with our foundation very much. And so we're granting money, particularly for the high school, to fund innovative materials and resources and interventions to address the well-being of our students. And I think that's really important, that the faculty and the staff were responsive to the needs of our students, and that the Ed Foundation deemed it as equally important. So I want to thank everybody for coming out and supporting the foundation at our annual gala, and then for us to be able to grant this money is really special. Something else happened that was very unusual this year. The class of 1959 had their 60th high school reunion and decided that they wanted to honor one of their former classmates who recently passed by granting money to our school district, in particular, the high school. And we partnered with the class of 1959, and they have a special donation that we are using those funds to grant particular requests for technology, arts, broadcasting, and journalism to honor one particular classmate. So I'd like to please welcome Bo Gardner, class of 1959, to come on up.
Thank you. On the behalf of class of 59, celebrating it, as Audra said, the 60th year since graduating Southside High School, and in memory of Stephen Langfelter, we are pleased to present our class gift to the Rockville Center Education Foundation in the amount of $42,824. Wanted to say two things about two special people. Stephen Langfelter, of course, created a database of over 200 names, addresses, and emails, and sent out updated lists four times a year to everyone. Steve enjoyed doing this for over 20 years. And his message at the end of each mailing was always, "Stay connected." And because of Steve, we were a very close, very close class, and we appreciated his being Steve. We're also very fortunate to have a major donor, Ernie Steiner. He was a good friend and former classmate of Steve's, and he helped kick off this initiative. We hope Southside's future students will have an enhanced school experience through the many grants this gift will provide, reflecting Steve's interest in broadcasting, journalism, film, music, and art. We're presenting this check to Audra. We also hope that this leads the way to other classes to follow in our footsteps.
John, we have a couple of other gifts that are on that list, too, that I just wanted to acknowledge. We have two soccer goals from the Riverside PTA for the small grassy field area at Riverside School. We have $2,000 also from the Tommy Brel Foundation to be used to purchase sneakers for course students who completed a virtual marathon in the Achilles Kids program. All right, those are the two others, apart from the two that we received from the [inaudible].
I just want to say, to the PTA who gave the gift of the goals, we're going to work on that grass field where they're going to go on. Do I -- can somebody --
Make a motion.
Can I have a motion to accept the gifts?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everybody. All right. We are now in the part of our meeting, which is the happy part of our meeting, and I mean the fun part of the meeting, where we're going to recognize teachers for their services mentors, and then tenure, and then we go to a little sadder part of our time, but we'll start off on that.
You took away my introduction. You know that, right? Okay. Anyway, yeah, I'm going to use a different word. It's really an opportunity for us tonight to celebrate the incredible service that's provided to us by so many of the professionals and the support staff that we have in the school district, and in addition to talk a little bit about the recognition of the partnership that exists between all of the professional staff and the members and leadership that exist within our PTA. So I'm going to start with the mentors, which is an absolutely critical part of cementing the relationship between new people who come to the school district and the veterans in our school district. I'm going to ask again, Dr. Pelletieri, if you would take a few moments to do the introductions and then introduce the two people who will, I think, call up everybody, and then John and I will go up and go on with the recognition. Chris?
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Yes, mentoring is really a key component to what we do here in Rockville Center. It helps build a strong foundation. You may read about school districts where there's a great deal of turnover, where people struggle initially. In Rockville Center, we really take people into our family, and we make sure that there is someone there for them each and every step of the way. And that's something that's really been important to us, and is a basic tenet of what we do. And mentoring has been a strong arm for us for many years. Our two mentor facilitators right now are Keith Eckert and Patrice Williams. They're both here tonight. I'm going to ask them to say a word or two about our mentoring experience, and then we're going to give out certificates to our mentors. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Keith Eckert. I'm one of the mentor facilitators. Dr. Johnson's upset at Mr. O'Shea for stealing his words, but he kind of just stole our words as well. One of the really great things we do in this school, in this district, is the mentoring program. We definitely want to say thank you to all of our teachers out there that were part of the program. You guys give up a lot of your time to help some of the new teachers. I know Dr. Johnson, when he talks about tenure later, will say that, you know, your tenure track and your tenure is kind of the engagement in marriage, so we like to think of mentoring as kind of like that first --
Hey, hey, Mr. Eckert, you just stole his line. You can't do that. That's the superintendent.
So with that being said, I think Patrice is going to call everybody up, so when your name is called, please come up.
Thank you. So I'm Patrice Williams, a teacher at the high school. I'm the other mentor facilitator. So, you know, mentoring this year, our job is really to, you know, with the committee to pair the teachers together. You know, it's really instrumental, especially in your first year, or even if you're a seasoned teacher coming into a new environment, getting acclimated to the culture, getting, you know, used to the school, just how things are done. And, you know, for the most part, I feel like it's been very beneficial every year. So at this time, let's call up our teacher mentors. So Kristin Axionoff. Jenna Alexi.
I'm sure they're busy working with the teachers that they're mentoring. That may be why.
Oh, Jenna just had a baby. Okay. That's important work, too. Christine Brown. Jamie Chalumi. Kristin Clancy. Therese Cohen. Who's this guy? Keith Eckert?
He's here.
Doreen Frieling. He's here. Thank you so much. We're going to take a settle. Okay. Darcy Goldcrest. Jean Horn. Carla Jones. Nicole Noor. Kathleen Mark. Stephanie Mark Walter. Jen May. Nancy Osborne. Jeffrey Rubenfeld. Emily Santa Marina. Deborah Schall. And Christopher Zappia. All right, so at this time, we would just like to thank the mentors. You know, some of the mentors up here have been doing this numerous times, so this is not their first time. They've done it multiple times. So we'd really like to thank you for, you know, taking the time. Everybody's very busy, but we really appreciate the fact that you have done this for the district and for the teachers. Thank you.
I'd like to publicly thank Keith and Patrice as well for their hard work in running that mentoring program. Really important.
They're all in order. So Keith was right. He stole the show, but nevertheless, yeah. This is a very, very special night for us to celebrate. We call it cementing the relationship between our new teachers and our veterans as part of the mentoring process. There is a seal that we provide and a recognition that we provide to people who are now with us, we hope permanently. The analog that I've always used to describe this, and it's like, you walk through my office today of the board meeting and say, oh, here he goes again, the marriage speech. In reality, that is what this is probably as close to as we can do professionally. We've been engaged to you for the last few years, and now we are permanently connected at the hip for, we hope, the duration of your career here in Rockville Center. This is symbolic, but it's very real. I say marriage because it's just not you being recognized by us. You have selected Rockville Center as the place that you want to contribute, to make different, to make better. We recognize and understand and acknowledge the fact that you've done just that. So providing tenure is really a way of us saying, "Thank you for your years of service. Thank you in advance for living with us for the rest of your career," if you choose to do so. And we are confident that what you've started with us already will continue for the rest of that career. So on that note, we would like to bring you all up. This is in alphabetical order. Kathleen Aliva from Watson Elementary School. You know what's wonderful about this, too, is that we get a chance to meet your families. You know, it's like, we grow up with you, but we don't have an opportunity ever to see husbands, wives, brothers, sisters, mothers, aunts, and uncles. So it's great to see it. And so Kathleen, you're the first. Don't go away. All right. Danielle DeMare also at Watson School. We actually have three people from Hewitt School tonight. Julie Dagnan, Hewitt. And although it's a little bit out of order, John, it's going to -- I hope it doesn't throw us all, but Carol Sharky. From Southside High School, Angela Greenberg, special ed. Southside Middle School, Donnell McCallum. And serving as school psychologist at both Hewitt and St. Agnes, Michelle Stegman. Now we move on to another group of people, our graduating class of 2019. Really, just a wonderful time to celebrate. It's tough to look back and say, "All the years of service." I was trying to figure out this afternoon, how many years of service, people, it's close to 500, when we add up all of the years that all of these various people have contributed to the lives of the children and the community here in Rockville Center. And they've done it in so many different ways, some in many different ways over the years that they have served our children in this community. So let me start with the administrators. We have two tonight that we're going to recognize. Only one could join us. Tricia Bach, who is the principal at Riverside School, could not be here tonight. Rose Camerata, who is an assistant principal at Southside Middle School. Rose? You know, I hope just, you know, just hang out here for a few moments and shine in the glory of all the years that you've provided to us. Rose actually started here as a teacher in 1996. She had gone to Malloy College in Adelphi. She worked, was it six years as a teacher, became assistant principal in 2003, and has served in that capacity ever since. Just incredible, the number of children that have passed through the life, your life, at Southside Middle School, and we certainly thank you for all of those years of service. So you get the flowers and a certificate. We have a number of teachers who have decided to move on, and the first, a couple of people couldn't show up tonight, Mary Fletcher and Barbara J. Mary Fletcher from Southside Middle School and Barbara J. from Hewitt School could not be here. I feel like I've grown up with these people. And I really mean that, because, you know, as you mature through your career, as you spend many, many years of dedicated service, as they all have, you get to know them in so many different ways and so many different capacities. But each of them are remarkable human beings. And let me begin with Paula Lake, who is a -- I actually worked with your mother-in-law before you joined us. You actually began, I believe, in 1981. Yes, oh, my God. At 12 years of age, right? Holy smokes, that, right, just two years after I arrived here. Yes. At any rate, she was an elementary teacher from 1983 to the present, literally in one school, Covert School, right? Remarkable career. She has become known, really, throughout the Covert community as just a wonderful human being and a wonderful teacher, so we really thank you very much for all your years of service. Paula? All right, Sherry. Sherry actually joined us in 2001 and has spent her entire career actually at Watson School as well. So congratulations, Sherry. Thank you so much for your service. I wasn't sure if I could sing this tonight, and I'm just not even going to try, but Debbie Schall, recovery talent works at both Watson School and at Covert, music teacher, began in 1999 and has served us in that capacity ever since, very notably and nobly. Thank you so much for your service. Thank you, Debbie. Not everybody in the world knows that actually the sixth of our elementary schools at St. Agnes, there are so many services that we do provide. We really consider it a real partner in the education of children here in Rockville Center. And what we've done is we provide special education and meeting services, and we are here tonight to celebrate the work that Ellen Seda has done at St. Agnes for all the years that she has been there. Ellen, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
I wasn't sure if I could sing this tonight, and I'm just not even going to try, but Debbie Shaw, recovery talent works at both Watson School and at Covert, music teacher, began in 1999 and has served us in that capacity ever since, very notably and nobly. Thank you so much for your service, thank you Debbie. Not everybody in the world knows that actually, the sixth of our elementary schools at St. Agnes, there are so many services that we do provide, we really consider it a real partner in the education of children here in Rockville Center. And what we've done is we provide special education and meeting services, and we are here tonight to celebrate the work that Ellen Seda has done at St. Agnes for all the years that she has been there. Ellen, thank you so much. The irreplaceable, irrepressible, English teacher at Southside High School. I've spent a lot of time, I do this TV show every Tuesday that nobody watches, but nevertheless, there's always an annual event every year in which we have an opportunity to celebrate the work that we do here in the school district in film, and Deborah Tanklauer, our English, has done an absolutely fabulous job with our ID Film Program. Deborah, thank you so much for your years of service. What we have come to appreciate in this school district is the work in our buildings that are done by teacher assistants and teacher aides, and we're here tonight to celebrate the work that they've also done for our school district and the contributions that they have made to our children as well. So first up is Joan Cullen. Joan, from Hewitt School. At Covert School, John Keen. At Wilson School, Nina Kenny, teaching assistant. Marguerite Lloyd from Southside Middle School could not join us, but... Watson School, Janice Mashad. Janice, I think you were the first class of teaching assistants, right, in 1999? Wow. Congratulations and thank you so much. Hold it one second. You will, okay, good. We have three teacher aides that we're recognizing tonight as well. Donna Giacabellus and Johanna Pello, both from Southside Middle School could not join us tonight. But from Wilson School, Nicole Erwin. We have two nurses who have decided to retire, Catherine McIntee and Deborah O'Rourke, who's able to join us tonight, Catherine could not. Deborah? Actually, I think Deborah, you've been at Hewitt School since 2000, right? My goodness, holy smokes, congratulations. All right, Joan, if you don't mind, you have one, go stay here. You know, when you talk about family, you really talk about some of the people that you bump into every day. I've learned to appreciate the work that I do, which is so much enriched by the people who walk through that door in the White House every day and make our lives so much better. Never met with a frown, always with a smile on their face, and we're here to recognize and very sadly, talk about the loss to the school district of the many years of service that they have provided. Sometimes in the shade, not in everybody's, not in the buildings, although many of them have started in the buildings as aides or teaching assistants, and then moved over to us as secretaries. So let me begin by talking about two of the people that worked in the business office as confidential secretaries. One is the Assistant Business Manager, Mary Ann Friedman. We're not talking about how many years, I know, right? You're part of the 500 years, but that's all right. We're not going to say how many, right? Uh-oh, all right, well, we won't say that here publicly. Her partner in the office, one of the back offices, Maureen Gaddis, could not join us tonight. But, again, you know, when you talk about one of the schools, and we very often take a look at the leadership within the schools and ask ourselves about the principal, and it's a little like my office, who runs the school district? Suzanne, where are you? Jackie, where are you? But you go down to Riverside School and you ask yourself, who is Riverside School? And so many people will tell you, it's Mary Conerty, so, Secretary of Riverside School. Also, Secretary in one of our buildings, again, when you walk into the building, how many people do you really get to know? This is a very special lady, Secretary at Southside Middle School, Roseanne Kenowitz. You abandoned us a few years ago to go from the White House to the high school, but many of the people in this community know you because of the very fine work that you've done in community education for so many years. All right, Margaret Kevlin. Oh, textbooks and tests. All right, Christine Kolinkowski, of course, she could not be here tonight, I thought she was going to come. Right, yeah. Okay. A lot of people, when they enter Southside High School grounds, they look to the left and then look to the right and said, "What is that?" Well, that's our computer center, and it's manned by a number of very, very special people, one of whom is leaving us tonight, Cheryl McGoldrick. Well, anybody who's ever had a question about health insurance or benefits, they know who to go to. Not to Robert Bartels, not to Dr. Johnson, but to, who else but Nancy Pinto? All right, thank you so much Nancy, for all of your years, all right. And last on this list, anybody who has come to the school district and worked with the Committee on Special Education over the many years that we have served our special ed population, has come to know and appreciate the incredible work that's done by Mio Rubin. Thank you so much. One other group of employees that really make the school district hum, are the people who work in our buildings every day to make it shine, and work around the school district to maintain the quality of our buildings, so that again, we have a safe, clean, very healthy environment for all of our children. We're here to recognize the work that three people have done in that capacity. Don Gaddis, who has worked as a senior maintainer and electrician, Jimmy Jaeger, who worked as a custodian at Wilson School, and last but not least, somebody who has joined us tonight and started in 1999, Freddy Rodriguez. He's wearing his superintendent's uniform tonight. Something we haven't done before, but we've decided to, on the part of the Board of Education, recognize a group of people in this community again. When you talk about the circle of people who need to provide for the education of our children in this community, we could not do it without the parents and working in partners with these parents. So what we've done tonight is to, again, put together certificates to recognize the incredible work that's done, at least by many of the parents and all of the parents, but certainly those who provide the leadership necessary in our school district to make the PTA work effectively. They are, at the PTA Council, co-presidents Christine Farazani and Janet Gruner, Karen Burge, the SEP representative, if you would please come up and join us. Really, on behalf of the entire group, we could not have all of the leadership join us tonight, but we are asking that the presidents and co-presidents join us up front. So Joan, if you would. Wait, we just started, hold on one second. No, no, that's council. For those of you who don't know, we have the leadership that you see right here, represent essentially the entire school district. But in every building, there are some very, very special people who provide the leadership necessary in order to make each of our building units work effectively. At the high school, Sue Quilty and Donna Downing, high school PTA co-presidents. From Southside Middle School, Christine Kufta and Irma Altman. From Covert School, Kristen Klaudfelder and Heather Teta. From Hewitt, Marlene Mccone and Katie Rockefort. From Riverside, Mariana Bracco and Debbie Cuevas. From Watson School, Tracy Pfeifer and Christina Johnson. And Wilson's co-presidents, Christina Kasap and Meredith Foshetta. This is the backbone of our community and our school system. Thank you so much for all that you do for our children in Rockville Center. Time to clear out the room. No, we have... What we're doing right now, actually, is, part of the celebration every year is to provide coffee and cookies so that we can all celebrate together. We have an opportunity to meet your families, talk with you informally with one another. And again, my last words to you are, thank you, thank you, and thank you for your service.